How you doing everybody? Oh, man, I got a good looking guy on there who not that old. But he might got a little gray in his hair. That's because he's wise. That's all it is. Don't let the gray fool you. It's just wise and he gonna show some. He gonna share some wisdom with us today on strong inspirations. I'm telling you somehow, some way I find people who know what they talking about and I let them do the talking. I give you this little intro in the front and I ask some questions, but I try to be quiet because I'm interested. So, hey, everybody, I tell you what I need you to do and you know what I'm about to tell you. Go on and hit the subscribe button on this channel. It's free. I say that all the time because people might be hesitant. How much it goes? You gotta subscribe, but just let me know you like me. Like this video. You're gonna like this one. You like all of them, but this one here is good too. And then hit the notifications bell. Because then you get a little ding and you be like, man, I can't wait till he put up another video. And I'm putting up four, five, six videos a week. The bell will let you know I just did it and then you can watch it. And then, uh, don't keep it to yourself, my friends. Tell somebody about strong inspirations. Strong, you might hear me say that word a lot because strong stands for strength, tenacity, resilience, and a sense of witness, nobility, and grace. That's what I call strong and people I have on here. This guy, he smiling, he ready go. He a small, he a strong guy. Uh, that's what we do here. And as you know, I got a movie out. It's a documentary called Business in the Black: The Rise of Black Business in America. Business in the Black: The Rise of Black Business in America from eighteen hundred to nineteen sixty. It's seventy-five minutes of powerful, powerful black history. And, uh, I started out with how slaves learn how to read and write and get their education. And then I throw in that little middle to kind of hide what them races did to destroy what we built. You know, Tulsa, Oklahoma, other cities running freeways, so on and so forth. And then the bulk of it is that black millionaires in eighteen hundreds and slaves who bought their freedom. It's good stuff. And, uh, this is the DVD that I'm holding up. But, uh, and it's also available in digital format on Amazon. And I wrote a book. It go with the movie. It's called Black Business Book. It's got over two hundred amazing black history facts. It's in the same format as the movie, but it's got more stuff, more facts. It's got some quotes by famous black people. And I even throw in a few photos just to give you a little something, something, make the flow go good. You know what I mean? And, uh, my book is also available on Amazon. But if you, you know, don't mind, you cut the, cut the big man out, uh, you can go to my website. Uh, inspirationsbystrong.com, inspirationsbystrong.com. Because everything I do is the word strong in it somehow, and I'm trying to inspire you. So, you know, my man said, hey, I'm ready to go. I'm here in South Carolina. Let's rock and roll. He, he, he sitting there. He got backdrop. He got backdrop. So, sir, introduce yourself. Uh, and tell us a little bit about who you are.
Well, good evening, Anthony, and, uh, hello, America and all the ships at sea, as someone would say. I am very, very pleased to be on this program with you. Thank you for inviting me. And Anthony, uh, you know, even in the short.
Hold on, hold on, hold on, hold on. What's your name?
Okay, yes, okay. Um, I am Cecil Williams. I live in Orangeburg, South Carolina. And I am speaking to you this evening from my museum that I have created. I am the founder of the first and only civil rights museum in the state of South Carolina.
Really?
In Orangeburg. It's called the Cecil Williams South Carolina Civil Rights Museum.
Man, you got your own museum. That's beautiful. That's a, that's a, that's real commitment to, to sharing this knowledge with people.
Well, thank you.
How long the museum been going?
It's been going about two years now. Even in that short period of time where we were still developing the museum. And imagine this been taken a long time because I did it out of my own means. Uh, I had a building. I even had the, uh, artifacts, the photographs, the documents. But of course, it takes millions of dollars to a museum and that I did not have. So, uh, two years into, uh, the, uh, you might say the attempt to make this a museum, uh, I'm still not completely finished, but nevertheless, I've still had, uh, nine thousand visitors to come into the museum.
Man, that's congratulations. So. Congratulations.
It's, 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 it's coming on and I'd also like to say at the very beginning here that, um, if you would wish to look at the museum, you can do that, uh, no matter where you are in the world. Just go to cecelwilliamsmuseum.com and you can take a virtual through tour throughout my museum right from your own desktop or phone.
Yeah, that's beautiful. So, how, how guy want to come up with his own museum? I, I, you know, I mean, I, I, how do you do that? It's not just your pictures all around the place and that kind of thing.
Yes, what makes this a slightly different museum is this is one of the few museums, uh, that was created from actually their personal account and participant of a person that participated in what is called the American Civil Rights Movement. The American Civil Rights Movement was that period of time between about nineteen fifty and nineteen seventy. It is important that everyone know about the Civil Rights Movement because this was one of the most defining moments or eras in our history. Whereas so many of the things that we enjoy today were created by people who sacrificed and marched and demonstrated in order to make a segregated America, a desegregated Amer-
Let me ask you, I get these questions. I gotta pop them at you. Excuse me for that. Uh, where is Orangeburg, South Carolina?
The home of South Carolina State University and Claflin University. Those two universes exist side by side, only separated by a fence. In fact, Claflin in birth, you might say to South Carolina State College, uh, back in eighteen ninety-six, when it, when a portion, when Claflin sold a portion of this property to South Carolina State and to the state. And of course, that state university was developed. Uh, approximately, uh, eight thousand students, uh, attend the colleges collectively speaking.
There was two HBCUs.
There was a two HBCUs, uh, in the town of Orangeburg. Orangeburg is a small town, about fifteen thousand. But we have again, these two HBCUs which really make us a sort of an international city, so to speak, in a small sense.
Right. Now, are you a native of Orange of the town?
Uh, my parents before me, my mother and father, and most of my parents before me, we all were are from the area of south of, uh, Orangeburg, South Carolina. Yes.
And, and so, uh, like what did your, what did your folks do? Why were they in that city? Is it, was there something to do there? Industry or was it the cotton or what? How did they get there? Why there?
Well, uh, my mother was a school teacher and my father was a self-employed tailor. But, um, it happened that their relatives and the relatives before and our great, great grandparents really were just born in this area. Now, on my mother's side, uh, if you go back to my great grandfather who was white, he actually, uh, fought for the, uh, South, uh, in the, uh, war between the states.
Oh, now you got me going.
That part I'm not too proud about, um, but my family, uh, we come from, uh, an origin of black, white, and Native Americans in this area. On the other side, Native Americans, so white and African Americans. But, um, their families before them were all natives of this, um, this, well, I think it's a wonderful place to live. It has its shortcomings. It's a small town, but still yet the colleges afford many opportunities that are not usually afforded to maybe, uh, towns, the, the, uh, population of Orangeburg. They brought entertainment and lyceum features.
Yeah.
Uh, many other, uh, uh, things that, you know, makes it enjoyable and livable to be.
Yeah, I got you. I got you. I, I gotta, I gotta go back to this question. If you don't mind, I ask you and, and, and we will go forward from there. Your great grandfather was white with your grandmother?
My great grandmother, yes.
How, was that a relationship?
Um, yes, as I understand it, and we only found this out about four years ago. Uh, we knew on my mother's side that we had a white families, uh, you know, in, into the history of our families, but, uh, we only identified one as being buried in a graveyard only twenty miles from our home. And, uh, by the way, there was a Confederate flag that still is right by his tombstone even today.
Your great grandfather?
A reunion, uh, about four years ago and they did the research. Uh, this was kind of uncovered, actually, actually his name and, you know, and, and the relationships we had back during that period of time.
Was he, was he a enslaver? May I ask that?
No, he, uh, actually, uh, actually probably owned slaves, uh, and so don't have to read too much into that to.
I got you.
But, um, but he, um, really was a wealthy landowner, but what happened, uh, after he, uh, got ill in the age of about eighty or ninety, he, uh, checked himself into the Confederate Hospital in Columbia, South Carolina. And of course, they took all of his land. So, all the land that might have been maybe passed on down to other generations such as my family, again, we never got that because again, uh.
Oh, really?
When he checked himself into the hospital.
Oh, because that was, that was, that was, that was his pay to get his, his medical treatment?
Yes, that, that's how they looked at it. Yes.
Oh, man. And, and, and so he was wealthy. So he had acres?
Yeah, oh, yeah, miles. Lot of farmland, yes. And only about twenty miles from where I live today.
Let me ask you this. You got me on the street here. Did he take care of her kids? Did he, did he will her kids anything or did he just not be involved?
Well, not a lot. This was only a discovery, not by me, but another member of the family who had engaged the historian and a person to actually look up our history that this was uncovered. And of course, uh, you know, publication that I did, Unforgettable, a book I published in two thousand nineteen, I tell about that side of the family, but it's an ongoing thing. The story is still open and there's so much more to learn. Uh, I wish I had talked to my father more when he was living so that I would have been able to, uh, again, um, write down maybe of, of a lot of his history. Unfortunately.
Yeah.
I did not. And so, it's out on my father's side. But my mother's side, uh, going back, um, you know, it's, it's pretty well documented.
Wow. And so, uh, you never met him. He's a great grandfather. You never met him?
No, no, no. We're talking about, we're talking about it from, he, I think he, uh, enlisted in the, uh, to the Union in about eighteen sixty-three. And, uh, when General Lee, who led the South, uh, against the battle against, you know, in the Civil War, he also enlisted in Aiken, South Carolina, a small town around forty miles from here. And then he surrendered with, when General Lee, uh, and, uh, uh, parts of his army surrendered in Augusta, Georgia, as we are, as the story is told to us. Uh, so again, uh, you're talking about, you know, the eighteen sixty-five period of time of history. Um, and then down, of, of course, um, to the hundreds and in the beginning of the, um, the, the end of the eighteenth century, the beginning of the nineteenth century. Uh, my family, of course, comes of age, you might say, in the second half of the twentieth century. Uh, so, uh.
Wow.
Again, we are uncovering, uh, much about that side of the family, but it is a open story, uh, as of right now.
Oh, so he was a soldier in the Civil War?
Yes.
And, uh, and he enlisted because he was for slavery?
He was for slavery, right? But nevertheless.
But, but I, for some reason, and we're going to get to the museum, excuse me for this, but some reason I kind of thought that the, uh, enslaved owners, I don't know if I got the idea that they were in there. They would go into the army. I thought it was the field hands and the overseers and all the other people. But no, that's not the case. Even the, the slave owners, uh, joined this, joined forces.
Yes, um, many people, uh, may relate to the fact that actually the Civil War started eighty miles from where I am in Charleston, South Carolina, when cadets at the Citadel fired upon a United States, uh, vessel. And then that actually launched the first, uh, battles of the Civil War.
Sure.
Had that kind of thing happening where in this state. So, we were very definitely, you might say, the epic center of the Civil War.
Yeah.
And it spread out to Georgia, Alabama, Mississippi, South Carolina.
Right. Was, was there a battle in Orangeburg that they talk about as?
Uh, nearby, what's called Utahville, which is about, uh, forty miles from Orangeburg. We have, in fact, several, uh, major Civil War battles that are, uh, where they had the historical markers. Uh, so this was, uh, this was an important area back onto that part of, of history as well.
And so then when the Civil War is, what did the black people do there? Do they stay? A lot of people stay there? And that's where kind of your family begins at some point?
Well, that, then that's, that's how Claflin University and universes like this had its very early beginning, right after the Civil War. Um, Claflin University was founded in eighteen sixty-nine, only four years after the ending of the Civil War.
Right, right, right.
Many people began, of course, uh, uh, yearn for education and being trained professionally. A lot of times I have seen pictures of students at Claflin University who are engaged in bricklaying classes, uh, even in, uh, build the building trades, uh, the printing trades. There's a photograph of that we use in our history at Claflin where, um, there are students, um, actually in a class using a large printing press.
Yeah.
Uh, in and around the period of about eighteen seventy-five.
Wow.
So, uh, again, this is, uh, uh, one of the early, uh, uh, one of the first, this is South, uh, Claflin University is the oldest HBCU in the state of South Carolina.
Yeah.
And again, uh, it sold its land, uh, from which South Carolina State College was created in eighteen ninety-six. Near the, the turn of the century.
Wow, man, unbelievable. So now, um, uh, the, uh, okay, black people stayed after the Civil War ended and some stayed. Yo, your family stayed in Orangeburg after it was over?
Yes, on both on my mother's side and my father's side, they kind of grew up within and always, uh, you might say maintain a presence in and around a twenty mile area. My, my father's father, his parents, his grandparents, my mother's, uh, grandparents as well, yes.
So, uh, why didn't they leave and go north, do you think?
Well, uh, some parts of the family did. Uh, and so it was quite common if you really wanted to, uh, improve your, uh, self, uh, if you wanted to get better jobs and not have to rely on the, uh, you might say a lot of times the mercy of whites employing schoolteachers and of course preachers, ministers, of course, were independent.
Yeah.
But those, um, people of color who also specialize in certain professions also flourished. Because in, um, there was a time until really the eighteen nineties that African Americans were in the United States Congress from South Carolina.
Oh, sure, yeah.
In, under Reconstruction.
Yeah.
We were thrown out of office and where our businesses were taken from us and all the progress we had made after the Civil War. And after, you might say, the, uh, Union left the South.
Yeah.
Then this, uh, South Carolina and many other states becomes resegregated.
Yeah, right.
We formally went to some of the white universities around here, but we were, that all changed, uh, in and around the beginning of what's called Reconstruction.
Yeah, sure.
Period.
Sure. Now, what, uh, let me ask you this one more, I guess one more question maybe. What is your, your father became a tailor?
Yes.
Was he doing clothes for white people too or just black people?
The eighty percent of his business was white.
Wow, okay, how about this?
Deliver, uh, the clothes, the finished alter, altered clothes to the local white stores. Um, and, and, and on weekends and sometimes in the afternoon after school, uh, that was my little hustle to, uh, deliver the finished alterations. Uh, and then also on Saturdays, I was the one that went around to the stores and collected the money, which I, I liked.
Yeah, yeah, sure. Wow, that's incredible. Um, so now, uh, did you, did you ever, uh, face, or did he face racial strife against him as a black man in business? Uh, did the KKK come around? Any of those kind of things?
Well, yes, but, um, of course, again, uh, most of his business comes from white. But you see, again, you have a, uh, the situation where, uh, our life and lives of all people of color are governed and we have a separate type of path. From birth, you go to a separate church, a separate school. If there's a playground, there's a separate playground. Uh, at this, during this time, of course, we couldn't even go into a restaurant to get a hamburger. We would have to go to the side door. If we want to go to a restroom, there would be colored restrooms. So everything from birth to death is segregated during the period of time that I came of age. And also my parents before me, my parents before me suffered these inhuman kinds of things due to what they would call accommodation, where, you know, what are they to do? But it was my generation to come along that we began to challenge. We challenged and changed the constitution of the state of South Carolina so that, uh, the generation now that we, uh, have, of us have better opportunities, but it is on their shoulders.
Yeah, I got you.
And that's one of the motivating reasons why I started a museum because, again, here were people that sacrificed. Uh, some of them, um, who, uh, had to mortgage their houses to get students out of jail who were marching and protesting during the Civil Rights Movement. They sacrificed so much and there was no place in the state of South Carolina that really cared enough to look back and honor and recognize these people who sacrificed so much. We were the only state in the South that did not have a civil rights museum.
Yeah.
It, that is why I started.
I got you. I got you. Let me ask you. So now, did you do something yourself? May I ask? Uh, did you march or anything like that?
Uh, again, I marched, I protested, I, I demonstrated and I went to jail twice for taking pictures. I began photography at nine years old. And at fourteen years old, I had the distinction of becoming an official correspondent for Jet Magazine.
Oh, really?
Youngest correspondent for Jet Magazine in the history. I was among two people throughout the South that Jet relied on to regularly send them news events and photographs from my, this area.
So you went, you had to go to all the different stuff that was going on?
That is, that is why, again, I have this great, uh, huge collection of artifacts, documents, letters, photographs from all the period of this movement, again, that I'm covering.
How far did you travel to do your work?
Well, a, about a hundred mile area was my territory. I didn't get too, uh, much into the upstate of South Carolina because again, um, you, in South Carolina, you can't even get your driver's license until you're fourteen. So often when I covered anything out of town, uh, it kind of brought me back down to, you know, normal say, well, ask my dad to borrow the family car to go cover an assignment. That, that kind of brought me back down.
Okay, you, you said something there. You, you learned how to drive at what age?
I learned how to drive at about twelve, but I could not get my license until I was fourteen.
And, oh my God. So, I mean, you, you were a good driver at twelve? You had, I mean, you could take the car and go around.
No, I was driving a little bit, but you might say practicing, but, uh, but legally, uh, you could not get your license until you're fourteen.
Wow.
A friend of mine who actually had learned how to drive, who was about my same age, and, um, he would, um, get the car started and be in the driver's seat. And we would go down a long stretch of road and he would move out from under the wheel and I would slide under. And that's how I learned how to steer and shit, make the shifts.
Because it was automatic. So you had to shift.
No, no, automatic at that point. No, automatic was yet to come.
I mean, a manual. That's what I mean. Yeah.
Yes, yes.
Yeah. Oh, my God. And so, um, did you, uh, why were you, why did you go to jail? Can I ask you that?
Well, um, for taking pictures of what was going on. You see a lot of, um, what was happening in South Carolina um, was not known by anyone else out of this area, out of this, our South Carolina area. So that's again, another reason that motivated me to start a museum. Whenever I make a presentation any place in the country, I go to speak to talk about my books I have done, uh, I usually ask the people who or where or when did the Civil Rights Movement start? I ask my audience that, whoever I'm speaking to.
True.
And almost everyone says, you Robert Martin of the King and Rosa Parks, because they don't know of any other, especially when we talk about the beginning. But actually, South Carolina really is the birthplace of the Civil Rights Movement. We had our beginning years before the Robert Martin of the King and Rosa Parks engaged in the brave acts that they did on December first, nineteen fifty-five, when South Carolina and South Carolinians started really this movement years before that.
Okay. Now, okay, give me an example. What kind of, what, what, when you said they started, what did, you said they marched and protested and things like that? Um, did, did they ever get the water hose turned on them? Did they got any of those kind of?
All of that. But you see, in the small backwoods community of South Carolina, the white press cover that wherein when Robert King and Rosa Parks and the people of Montgomery engaged in the Montgomery Bus Boycott, there you have in the city of Montgomery, a network affiliate, NBC, that was developing. So it spread the news out to all of America. Then you had a much larger newspaper. But in some backwoods of South Carolina.
I see what you're saying.
Although not very much was reported. So that's why Jet needed people like me because we did report through the press.
Do you have any pictures of KKK people?
Oh, yes. That's in my museum as well. Yes. All of the, uh, opposition and the, the, the rage, the racial hatred and the, uh, the Klan, the, uh, the, uh, what is called the White Citizens Council, all that is represented in the exhibits in my museum.
Yeah. Did, how, how did, at twelve, weren't you going to school though? I think people.
I was in, I, I, I was in high school when I started as a correspondent for National Publication. All my, the other, uh, correspondents for Jet, of course, were, uh, in college or out of college working for them in the other states of, of the South, but I was the youngest correspondent working for them.
But again, okay, so how you do that and go to school? You, when, when does schools, high school start? Is there a different year or something?
No, I, I, I guess, uh, you know, uh, uh, in ninth grade, I guess you would say, uh, high school begins ninth, tenth, eleventh.
And, and at that age, you're, you're twelve, you're thirteen, fourteen years old.
I'm a junior RC at the time I started working for National Publication. Not only that, in addition.
I got you. I see what you're saying.
I freelance also for, uh, what is called the Pittsburgh Coria.
Yeah.
Afro-Americ.
Yeah.
Those were weekly publications that came into South Carolina and of course I also sold my pictures to them.
Were you ever, was your life ever put online or did you ever get so close to the action where the, the races was doing something that something could have happened to you other than going to jail?
More times than I can count, but especially on February the eighth, nineteen sixty-eight, when the event that is called the Orangeburg Massacre takes place here. This is an event where nine highway patrolmen loaded their weapons and went on the state college campus and, and for nine seconds pumped ammunition and, and shooting students on the state college campus. Had I not left thirty minutes earlier, I would have been there also.
How many did they kill?
They killed three and injured about twenty-eight who reported their injuries, but firing into a crowd of a hundred and fifty. Uh, it's always been, uh, speculated by other historians that many more were injured but did not report their injuries or just went back home for treatment.
So, so you saw the troopers with the guns doing the shooting?
Uh, yes. Uh, not only that, in my museum, I have the shells they used to even kill the students with and, and wound the students. Those are all parts of my exhibit.
Why did they, why did they shoot them?
This, why?
Yeah.
And, um, the lack of respect for people of color. Uh, the fact that, uh, the students were building a bonfire on the campus. Two days earlier, you see, they had attempted to integrate a bowling alley. And an incident happened there that they were run away from the bowling alley. So they couldn't leave their campus, but they were on their campus building a bonfire. And in some cases, they were taunting the police officers and calling them names, but they were on their campus. But about nine o'clock, nine thirty that evening, the chief of the, of the South Carolina Law Enforcement Division, which is called SLED in this state, the chief of this, of the South Carolina Law Enforcement Division, which is called SLED in this state, ordered twenty-two highway patrolmen to load their weapons, only nine obeyed. The rest, I think, thought, maybe not doing that, that would not be a good idea. These students were not, uh, carrying weapons, why do this? But I put respect for people of color. These nine highway patrolmen, following directions of the chief of their division, of their, uh, Law Enforcement Division, marched on the students, killing three and injuring twenty-eight.
Let me ask you this, let me ask you, if I, okay, you telling me I can't come in your bowling alley, and I gotta pay when I get there anyway, forget it, I don't wanna go, why do I wanna integrate it so bad?
Well, again, it was a barrier, it was, um, something there that should have been done, because there were students that wanted to bowl. Again, if they wanted to bowl, because this was a segregated bowling alley, they would have a hundred miles round trip. So it kind of started from that, it was one of the last holdouts of a racist place in the South that did not want people of color to actually, um, put.
Yeah. Okay, this, that leads to this question.
This was just, um, one of the places that was in Orangeburg.
That, that leads to this question, so do you, did, did, did segregation and, and desegregation, did that hurt black business? I mean, why did we, you know what I'm saying, they say, well, we wish that it wouldn't have happened, and then we fought for it to happen. What's the, what's the fine line there?
Well, um, actually, um, for a long time, uh, I have said, and I have read many times, that freedom is not free. You sacrifice to obtain that, and sometimes with freedom, there comes advantages and disadvantages. Uh, some of those African American businesses that relied totally on the fact that, um, their businesses were the only place that a person of color could go to and shop or take advantage of their service. In, in some ways, they lost business, because then people of color could then go to other places, restaurants, motels.
Right.
So forth and so on, you, it, in, in my town of Orangeburg, if you wanted to buy a pair of shoes, you couldn't even go into the downtown stores during this period and even purchase a pair of shoes, try them on. You could, I mean, you could purchase them, but you couldn't try on the shoes or clothes until you got back home. Uh, you couldn't, there were segregated water fountains, restroom, the schools, everything was segregated from birth to death.
Wow, and so, uh, you, you, you formed this, a museum of all these artifacts that you've kept over the years.
Yes.
And, um, it's a beautiful thing, I, I'm, 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 if I can say, I'm proud of you. I really like that you've done this.
Thank you.
Yeah, everybody, uh, is there a question that I haven't asked you, Mr. Williams, or something?
Let me, uh, 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 tell you a little bit more about why South Carolina, uh, really is the birthplace of the American Civil Rights Movement.
Okay, yes.
Um, again, almost everyone, um, can relate to that historic decision by the Supreme Court on December the seventeenth, I'm sorry, yes, uh, uh, May seventeenth nineteen fifty-four, when the Supreme Court ruled that segregation in education is unconstitutional. The Supreme Court ruled on segregation in schools. It was in South Carolina, thirty miles from where I live, that, that first case, the two, developed. And it was called the Briggs versus Elliott case. That was the lead case in what is called Brown versus Board of Education. So that was the real beginning of the Civil Rights Movement. Because the governor did not want the South Carolina case to be the lead case, he asked members of the Supreme Court to please not name this, that started the, the desegregation of America to after a South Carolina case. So that's why it was named after Brown of Topeka, Kansas, rather than Briggs of Clarendon County, South Carolina. The second wave of change besides Clarendon County in about nineteen forty-nine, keep in mind now, Martin Luther King and Rosa Parks don't even come to be known nationally until December first nineteen fifty-five. But in nineteen forty-nine, here's this case developing thirty miles from where I am, in Summerton, by these brave people who are farmers, they started the first case in history that attacked segregation in public education. The room that I'm in, that you see in the background, is the third Good Marshall Room in the museum that I created. It is dedicated to that very brave and courageous attorney who handled that brave case when it went to the Supreme Court. The second wave of change, that was the first wave of change, leading to the Brown versus Board of Education.
I like it, I like it.
The second wave of change happened to Orangeburg, because again, the reason that Jet picked me to become a correspondent, they were pulled in in the second wave of change in Orangeburg, because we here had engaged in a new type of strategy, fighting against racism. And that was the protest and boycott of white businesses that fired African Americans from their jobs when they applied for their children to go to schools. That was a new technique, and Jet thought it was so important that they cover this, because that had not been used throughout history, really against segregation, a, a new strategy against trying to bring down the barriers that separated people of color.
They would fire them from their job if their son or daughters tried to go to school.
That is correct, when they applied to what is called the Orangeburg, South Carolina petition. So we represent here in Orangeburg, this is the second wave of change. And then, again, before the Robert Martin of the King and Rosa Parks, brave heroes they are.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
They don't even come yet into the picture. The pictures in Jet Magazine of Emmett Till would be the third wave of change, where his picture of a little boy in Mississippi who was killed by the Ku Klux Klan, it becomes the third wave. The fourth wave, again, is, again, when the Robert Martin of the King and Rosa Parks begin their journey on December first nineteen fifty-five. But these other waves of change originated here in South Carolina.
I love it, oh, man, I met a hero tonight, I met a hero tonight, everybody. And you get to see him on the channel, strong inspirations. Um, I thank you so very much. Now, the website of the, of the museum is what again?
It's CecilWilliamsMuseum.com.
CecilWilliamsMuseum.com, uh, and you have, you've written a book or two, you say?
I have written five books, but my last book was done in two thousand nineteen, it is called Unforgettable. Uh, my third book is my most, um, largest book, it is called Out of the Box in Dixie. And it tells the story that I have told you just a little bit about, where extraordinary people of color really are affecting and engaging in activities that create the American Civil Rights Movement.
Okay.
Largely unknown, though.
Yeah.
But again, very, very important to history, and also backed by chronological, uh, events and times, again, that's not readily known by most people, most people think of, again, the Robert Martin of the King and Rosa Parks.
I got you.
At the beginning, but they came along later.
Yeah, I got, hey, I'm gonna put, uh, everybody, I'm gonna put all of his books on the description line. And where you can get them, I guess they're on Amazon?
They're on Amazon as well, and just like you, I'll make a plug for it, you can go on my website and.
Then go to the website.
May I tell you one thing before we leave, um, it's so interesting that you're using the word strong. There are two songs that very much are civil rights songs of inspiration. Um, one of them is that great song by Sam Cooke, A Change Is Gonna Come. It was a Columbia incident, by the way, that inspired Sam Cooke to really, uh, pin the word, that great song. But there's another song that's also one of my favorite songs, and it's one of these songs, in my opinion, that kinda made me do something like, have the audacity to try to start a museum by myself, with the limited capital I did. And it's a song by South African group, and the name of it is La Brie Subrie. And the name of the song is Something Inside So Strong. So you see, it was something inside so strong that inspired me to take on this task of really trying to start a museum.
You got it done.
So, so something inside so strong.
I like it.
Song, great, uh, lyrics, uh, check it out.
I like it, I like it, and you, you got a museum.
I have a museum.
You got a museum, oh, man, this is so beautiful, everybody hit the subscribe button, hit the like button on this video, hit the notifications bell, tell somebody about strong inspirations, I tell you. Uh, the people like him that have been on this show already blow my mind, I know they blowing yours. Uh, to you, my brother, I say to you, I wish that, and I want you to stay strong, stay safe, stay on your grind, we really appreciate you as strong information, inspirations for being on the channel. And, um, I just wanna say goodbye, we out.
Thank you, Anthony, have a good evening.
You too.